I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 3rd. Would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please have a few moments of silence for the passing of Bruce Bray. Seated. And the roll call, please, when you're ready.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Shigle?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, the bell?
Here.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Ponce?
I'm here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here.
Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have no announcements.
Okay. Department head reports.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. The Public Works crew has been really busy. They're prepping for summer. I know you've all seen them out there. They're working hard. They will be repainting street markings throughout town. They started today. They're feverishly cleaning Front Street and prepping that, keeping the newly planted plants alive and doing any repairs to public restrooms. The crew is still working on the Sombrero Fountain, and they will be repairing sinkholes on Pebly Beach Road. They are also repairing any leaks that pop up, and there are quite a few that are popping up. We had one last week on Burma Trail, fixing one on Tremont currently. And of course, Public Works is there to assist other agencies and organizations that have leaks. For example, we just assisted Island Company today on a leak over at Pebly Beach that they had. It actually was a blockage. So they're still working on it, but we understand how difficult it is. It's an island with limited resources, so we are sometimes the last call. Hopefully, that's not really the norm, but we understand that happens. It's like the saying, who are you going to call? Ghostbusters? No, it's Public Works. Public Works is working closely with community services on several projects. We're helping with the installation of two art displays, one for Pride and one for Fourth of July. And then we're also working on the planning and installation of a new scoreboard at JMF, which is going to be a lot trickier than we think, so it's going to take a little bit more time, especially on the planning side and the engineering side of that. Any questions?
I have a question. If we help with leaks on other people's property, do we build them?
Absolutely.
Okay. And also, it's been hit up twice in the last few months about the crosswalk in front of the showers on the casino walkway.
Yep, that's exactly what we're going to be doing the next couple of weeks, actually the whole month of June, our markings throughout towns, all the street markings, so crosswalks, stop signs, all of that. Curb markings, we know the one on Clarissa by the donut shop. That one, for example, it's red, space, red, and needs to just be continuous red. But yeah, we know all the spots. We're just, you know, a lot to do in a small town at limited time.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah.
You are doing a great job. I see them every day, so it makes me very proud, want to be part of the city and part of the council. But I am curious, do we have a schedule for power washing downtown?
Yeah, Thursdays and Fridays. We just, last week, not last week, I'm sorry, the week prior, worked with Island Company to do a whole city washdown of Front Street. When I say city, not back here, just a front street. But yeah, Thursdays and Fridays are usually the washdowns.
And that will stay the same during the summer?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good.
That's when we ramp it up, actually.
Okay.
We have been. That's on our schedule, for sure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Good, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, city staff. Michael Allegria, Fire Chief. June 1st, we debatement will be out there next couple of weeks, taking pictures and sending out notices where it still needs to be cut. Wine Mixer, better than years past, pretty good, really good event. They had great music, just the normal couple of calls we had through there, but working with Grayson and the cops and the event, their staff and Island Company staff, a lot of pre-planning went into it, and overall, it was a good event this year. Stop the Bleed, June 10th, we have someone coming from the mainland. We're going to do Stop the Bleed down on Front Street. And then if you can make it, June 10th, Gail set up, lady named Kathy, she's been doing RCEs for almost 20 years from St. Mary's. We've known her, and she's doing a lecture on street drugs. And I've seen the presentation, it's a great presentation on what's out there, what's going around, what they're seeing in Long Beach. So it's going to be a great hour talk if you can make that here, June 10th, 6 o'clock. Other than that, dive, we had a dive call yesterday, showed up. Patient was in full arrest. Bystanders helped, put on our Lucas machine after manual compressions. He was taken down to the dive chamber and pressed, but before, on his way down to the boat, he started waking up on his way to the chamber and was sent to the mainland late last night, talking. So it was a good outcome, great teamwork by everybody, and that was a good save. Any questions? That's it, thanks.
Wait, wait, wait.
And?
I just wanted to say thank you again for presenting to the Avalon and Long Beach Rotaryies last Wednesday. It was well received, they enjoyed your talk, but I just wanted to thank you again for doing that.
Thank you, yeah, and I spoke at Rotary. Good lunch up there.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, city staff, council, mayor, city manager, Sergeant Grayson Klein, Avalon Station. I'll start with, I think the chief was being pretty humble about what they did yesterday. It was extremely impressive to watch. It was a unified command with county fire, with Avalon Fire, and with Harbor, and with the Sheriff's Department, and it didn't matter what the rank was, everybody had a role. I saw the chief picking up biohazard, and we had a perimeter there, and it was really impressive to watch. So he was being pretty humble, but it was a really good event, and they did an awesome job, I thought. And the best sound we heard was the man screaming when he got on the boat. That was music to all of our ears, but the chief did a great job. Since the last council meeting, we've had 58 calls for service, 74 observations, but a pretty busy two weeks. We had nine arrests, three for drunks, one for pointing a laser at a deputy, one for battery, one for battery on a peace officer, one for assault with a deadly weapon, hands or feet, and two for burglary. So these will all be upcoming court cases. The Wine Mixer was also, was a great event. I judge it on how many people went to the hospital and how many arrests, and we had zero arrests at the Wine Mixer. And the whole crew with the Island Company, Dave Stevenson, Tricia, Rudy Alvarez, and the perfect event that they used. They brought in 30 of their own security officers, and it's a really tight ship. I mean, they, we don't have to get involved very much. We had four deputies there at the event the entire time. But time, like Mike said, and the pre-planning that were put into it, we had multiple meetings, and then all the deputies went to every single wine vendor and reiterated, it's a sample, it's not a pour, and that kind of corrects behavior, because we let them know that it's just like them being a bartender. They will be liable if they over-serve people. So I thought the event was extremely successful, and the Island Company really took the lead on it, worked with Unified with Mike and I, and it was a really good event. And that's all I have.
Great. Questions, comments? Good, excellent. Thank you for the reply.
Good evening, Council, Matt Baker, Finance Director. Don't have a lot to report, other than the presentation coming up. It's a little too early to report on revenues for April. There's still a number of businesses outstanding, so I don't know if the number would be all that meaningful right now. Other than that, I have auditors on site next week, so if you see new faces in finance, we're already starting the process to get ready for the audit as we're wrapping up the budget, so.
We'll hear from you in a minute.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. David Hart, Community Services. Memorial Day, May 31st, was a real, was really moving. We had fresh flags on each of the veterans' graves. Joe Sampson sang the National Anthem, and then we had Patrick Degnan come forward, ex-Marine, and he went up and spoke on remembering the soldiers who died when they came home, because they were still fighting the war in their head. So it was a really good perspective for people to understand that, as well as Cal Parsons spoke on his own personal experiences, as well as he spoke on his two friends, who are the only two veterans up at the cemetery who are buried, who actually died during battle. That is Timothy E. Babostein and David Allen. And it ended with our ex-VFWs playing taps. I went to the vision meeting for the museum yesterday, along with museum board members, donors, artists, and other city stakeholders. The purpose was to see how the museum can expand their vision, especially in the field of community engagement. They are looking for more opportunities to be able to have the museum be useful, as be useful as a community space. They are also looking to expand the museum in public space, hopefully maybe with art installations throughout town. The meeting was eye-opening and encouraging. I am looking forward to helping them program their space, as well as become a partner in fusing more culture into the community. On Thursday, June 5th, we will be doing an art installation over Wrigley Stage for Pride, and install, we will also be installing the graduation banners on the light poles. June 11th, I will be attending a Gateway City COG meeting in anticipation of two major sporting events in our region in 2026, the World Cup and the 2028 Olympics. We will discuss the ideas of zones, fun zones, for residents to gather to watch games in group settings, but not actually have to be in an arena or a stadium. It will be a way to create a greater community, to feel part of the World Cup and/or the Olympics without having to purchase a ticket.
Yeah.
Currently, we have a one-man canoe on South Beach, which is being used by the Ocean Club, which is a club ran by two of our lifeguards, Dempsey and Madison, who are exposing our youth to water activities such as kayaking, outrigging, body surfing, surfing, and snorkeling. We will be putting a float in front of blue water, which those canoes will go from South Beach back onto the water, opening up that valuable beach space. Our summer program schedule goes into effect June 16th, with Sunday being Wellness Day, yoga on the beach at 9:00 a.m. All levels are welcome, and it is free. Monday Beach Day, 11 to 3:00, another great free family fun event on South Beach. Tuesdays and Thursdays, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., Beach Bingo on South Beach. You can win prizes with just a dollar a card. Wednesday, Fishing Derby on the Green Pier from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and movies on the beach starting at 8:00 p.m. on South Beach. Funky Fridays, Dancing on Wrigley Stage for the kids from 7:00 to 9:00. Saturday, Art in the Park from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. What we've done with our crafts this year is we've added more kind of STEM crafts. So not only are they going to be learning about, not only will they be having fun activities to be doing, but they'll be learning STEM activities. Many of these programs, many of these programs are made available through contributions from our local community service clubs, such as the Lions and the Yacht Club. Both organizations are always eager to help create a fun, unifying community event. Also, big shout out to all the local businesses who give prizes to us to give out at Fishing Derby, as well, as well as Beach Bingo, and I'll have a list of those, and you can see those on our Facebook page as well, those businesses. We really appreciate them, year in, year out, they've been very giving, and we appreciate them for that. Day Camp starts on the 16th of June. We have the majority of our fun and experienced staff are back. Kids six to 12 years old will be doing fun crafts, excursions, games, and supervised beach time. It runs Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. It's either $20 a day or $80 for the week. So basically, pay four days, get the fifth day free. Any questions?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
You got a lot going on. Every department does, it's crazy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. Last month, for the month of May, I have some code enforcement stats for you all. They wrote 270 citations, issued 14 red tags, responded to 30 animal control calls for service, issued seven, oh, sorry, responded to and investigated seven public nuisance complaints, issued nine notice of violations for fog and storm drain violations to businesses, and they wrote 22 case reports. In addition, we issued six more bike registration permits, so just a little reminder out there, if you have a bicycle, come in, register with the city, it's totally free, you can do it online, and then come pick up the sticker for your bicycle, so. And then today was the ribbon cutting ceremony for our reverse vending machine, so I just want to give a huge shout out to Olens, the cube manufacturer, our partners with CRNR, who will be doing the collections on the machine, and Vons for creating that space for us. I've already seen people out there using the machine, so Julie's presenting tonight, so she'll speak a little bit more about the machine, but yeah, that's all I have.
And thank you so much for spearheading that and getting that going, finding the innovation and all that kind of, it's wonderful.
Okay.
Now, thank you.
Council, good evening. Just a couple of things tonight. First of all, I just want to update council, last week, we had the city's consultant for the comp study present to all staff the results of the comp study. The comp study has then been, the data has been released to all employee bargaining groups, and I have blocked out for the next three weeks plus, as much time as possible to start those negotiation sessions. Unfortunately, we're later to the game than we wanted to be with the comp study. We were hoping to have this out much sooner, just didn't, didn't work that way with us getting the information back, so, you know, our goal was obviously have all these, all the current MOUs expire at the end of June, and I, at this time, I don't anticipate we're going to get all of them done prior to that, so we'll bring them when we get them ready, and certainly deal with retro and deal with those as they come forward. But just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. And then since our last council meeting last month, Planning Commission had their meeting regarding, primarily regarding the short-term rental revocations. City, we had presented, sent notices out to 95 properties that currently hold in some capacity either a CUP or grandfathered condition to have short-term rentals. Of those 95, Planning Commission revoked 60 that evening. The remaining 35 were scheduled, the property owners filed an objection of, it's, it's a huge movement forward, I would say, on what we're doing. Going back and looking, we have probably averaged, prior to the moratorium of granting, six to eight short-term rentals per year, so to revoke 60 of these old ones that were really in a, creating a confusing state of, for a number of different reasons, either they weren't using them, they didn't know they had them, but they were still on our books. And they created a situation that if those properties were sold, they could come on the books very quickly, and all of a sudden, we're facing it. So it was, it was a tremendous advantage to get those cleaned up, and then hopefully next month, we'll have, everybody will have their opportunity to be heard, and we'll continue to move forward down this path with the short-term rentals.
And some of those might come to us.
And some of those might come to council. So any of those appeals, either the ones that were revoked last time, or if any are revoked coming up, they have their opportunity to appeal to City Council, and they'll be heard, and we'll get those on your schedule. If they happen, you'll see them popping up in July, probably. But I really wanted to thank the Planning Commission members. It was a tremendous amount of information that we gave them with all these properties, because each one was slightly different. We had to evaluate whether or not each Planning Commissioner for each of those members had a violation of the proximity of being in too close and movement around, but they did a great job, staff did a great job. Donna, Kelly, can't say enough about everything they did to get us to that. It was a meeting, we went in thinking we were going to be there for four or five hours, and we were out of there within, you know, less than two. It was, they did a great job. So, you know, we'll see how it goes in June, but we'll keep going down this path with the short-term rentals, we're making significant headway. And I would say some of the feedback we've gotten from property owners since then is they, they appreciate how the process is going. They appreciate that they're having their opportunity to be heard, that they understand the problems, that the city's taking pretty much of a common sense approach of doing these and inquiring and letting them be heard. So so far, so good, and hopefully that'll keep going. Any questions?
Do you have a city attorney in the house?
Yeah, just to reiterate what Dave said, it was a great effort on behalf of staff to coordinate this, to get all the categories. It was a lot of work behind the scenes. It went smoothly that evening, but I can't emphasize how much work city staff had done before that hearing to make it go off very, very well, and we anticipate that the next meeting may take a little bit longer, because we have to consider each property individually. But it's, again, for the first time in 15 years, we're actually moving forward on revoking some of these and getting the city a better sense of how many units are actually out there being used, and that you'll then be able to take that information when you look at what to do with transient occupancies going forward. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Councilmember reports?
I can go first. Just got back from vacation, so I am playing catch-up, but still working on the usual so Boys and Girls Club. We're already working on doing our breast cancer awareness event with Gail, of course, looking for the resource fair and all that good stuff, so the work never stops around here.
Okay, well, I did watch that Planning Commission meeting, and I would like to echo those sentiments, that I was really concerned, it could have gone either way, but staff was extremely prepared, and the methodical way that they went about it was, was very, very good. And so I was happy to see the results of that, so kudos to the staff for that. And I've been busy, but really not much to say. I've been doing a lot of stuff, but still waiting on stuff. Oh, and then Annie, you might like this, Phoenix reached out to me about a float for the Rose Parade, so I haven't got, received a dollar figure yet, but I have a feeling it might be a little cost prohibitive.
It's between $150 and $250.
Oh, is that all?
That's what I say.
Well, I'm going to follow up with them and see what's going on, because I think it would be really, really fun to have a float in the Rose Parade.
Did you talk to Harvey or Jordan? Who'd you talk to?
Well, I talked to Harvey personally, and then I, then I got information from the head guy of Phoenix.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Jordan's all excited about it, too.
Oh, so more to come.
That's it for me.
Not a whole lot this week. The application window finally reopened for the second round of the federal funding account through the CPUC. There had been some technical issues with Salesforce, apparently, which allowed applicants to view other applicants' applications at one point, and so they had to shut the whole system down and rebuild it to be able to make it function again. So hopefully now, we're on a timeline of two weeks, and two weeks, and two weeks. I'll believe it when I see it. I have Gateway City's COG tomorrow over town. This is the month where we have two COG meetings, so that we don't have to have one in July. Dave, I'm glad that you're going to the 11th meeting about the fund zones. I was actually going to ask about that tonight, so thankful to hear that you're heading for that, and I believe, oh, the only question I did have from a few community members this week had to do with a slight increase in noticeable homeless population, and so Jocelyn and Grayson, maybe we can connect after the meeting today, but just wanted to touch base on what the best course of action for business owners or residents is if they have a concern, who they should be reaching out to, code versus sheriff. Part of it stemmed from just more gatherings on Front Street especially. Some of the questions had to do with being able to sell things, which I don't believe anyone who was being discussed had permits to do that on Front Street, so just trying to see what we need to do to be able to both make sure that they're following what rules there are regarding sales on Front Street and vending, and also seeing if we can connect people with services, whether that's through LA County, through hospital, through wherever it is we're going to do. I do also want to see if we can set with all of, all of you guys in September, hoping to have Gilbert Saldate from the Gateway City's COG, who is the homeless outreach person, be able to discuss kind of what the possibilities are in that realm for us here in Avalon, so to have city staff on board as well. But I'm hoping that the day after our regular retreat, we can have that conversation in person, so that's all I've got.
I have a SCAG on Thursday, but I do it via phone, so I don't have to go to downtown LA. And again, I was at the Revers recycle, it was absolutely awesome. They were, John was very good about going to Val's house and setting us up with our little app, so that was great, and I just look forward to getting more information out for those people who don't have phones and can't do it with their little card. But I'm very, very excited for the whole town, all the way around. That's it. Okay. Oral communication, this is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. I see Mr. Burchall is here today.
Hello there, Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. Thank you very much, glad to be here. So the Summer Discovery Program has started at the library. I am giving away free books, and you read three books and do three little challenges that I have available, and we've got prizes. I haven't bought them yet, but we will, don't worry. The county has sent me some stuff, but I think I'd better buy some stuff, too, if you know what I mean. But we have lots of free books. Coming up in terms of events, I'm going to do some art stuff on Tuesday and Friday in concert with the Summer Discovery Program. Going to have a Round Robin art project on the 11th. Oh, I see. We've got a grant from Edison through the County Library, not through the island, to do a STEM Day on the 18th, which is, they've given me some sort of high-tech equipment that the kids can put together and create a crazy mechanical contraption. Should be kind of fun. The boxes have just arrived, that's going to be on the 18th.
What is the age group for something like that, do you think, Paul?
I would put it at slightly tween-teen, but I think younger is okay. Seven, seven to about 15, I'd say. Seven to about 15 is what I'd do. On the 20th, we're going to have a concert with Craig Newton, who has come out to the island before, and he's going to do a lovely Songs of California show for, for, for June. We still have our Michael Connolly Book Club coming up on the 24th. Books are starting to arrive. Put them on hold, that's the way to get them faster, because they arrive and they go out on hold, and somebody, you know, I've got about eight, but they're going out. And yeah, on the 24th, we're going to have a little book club. I'm hoping to do a surprise or two. I'm not sure how that's going to work out, we're still talking, but yeah, please, come and use your library.
And I'm wondering, this is a question for you, Dave Hart and Paul. Dave Hart and Paul. Do you see an opportunity for us, you to take your day campers to the activities that they're doing in the library?
Sure.
And that'd be a large number, but it would be well received, especially for these artists and people that come from, musicians that come and enhance our program.
We've had class visits from the summer camp before. Last year, I think we did it twice. So it is, we've, we've done this before. We've had, we've had visits to the library with the camp. That would be awesome.
Excellent.
And I encourage that, it would be awesome.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Presentations.
This is just rural communication.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Didn't mean to confuse you. Chief Algreo stole my thunder a little bit, but I just wanted to mention that next week, Tuesday, in this council chambers is the next community health talk and it is about street drug awareness. Kathy and Matt were here last year doing the Stop the Bleed event on the Wrigley stage, so if anybody partook in that, they, they do all the disaster resource center, emergency preparedness stuff with all of Long Beach Airport, Long Beach Fire, Long Beach Police, and some Department of Homeland Security Special Force or something like that. So, they are really amazing and personable and they'll be here to just give you all the information about what to look for, what signs to see maybe in your teens, tweens, whatever. It's for all ages, so thankful that Chief Algreo is encouraging everybody. So I encourage everybody, please join us next Tuesday here, 6:00 to 7:00 PM. We'll have some refreshments, too. And we'll record it and have it livestream on YouTube, on the hospital's YouTube channel and, and Facebook, and then share it after that, too. So there'll be plenty of opportunities, but if you want to ask questions, this is the place to be, so.
And how about, I don't know who is, who is passing out? What, Narcan?
They're going to show you how to use Narcan. And then we have free fentanyl test strips and naloxone test strips. So, our naloxone is like a Narcan. So, we'll have that, too. And so we have someone here to show you how to do that stuff. And then we'll have Spanish translation as well.
Sweet, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Presentations. We'll start with Mr. Kilpinski.
Good evening, Mayor and council and city staff. Tim Kilpinski, chief strategy officer at Catalina Island Health. Hey, I want to thank you for allowing us to do this presentation and we've already signed up to do quarterly presentations to council, so we're already on the calendar for September. Basically, what I'm going to go over here for a few minutes is the current hospital operations and then I'll transition into the new hospital and give you some background information on that. So just in case, a little primer on, we're a critical access hospital, you've heard that over and over again, but just so you get a sense, in round figures, there's 37 of those in the state of California. And half of those are public hospitals or tax district hospitals and qualify for a lot of supplements to make up for being under reimbursed for some of the healthcare they provide. And then the other, approximately half, are part of bigger systems. They don't necessarily qualify for supplements, but they get something in the cost-based world of home office allocation. So what that does, the big system gets to put on average $15 million of cost onto the small hospital. And that small hospital reports it, doesn't have to pay the big hospital, but then Medicare says, ooh, you had to pay for the overhead of HR at the big hospital, legal at the big hospital, IT at the bigger hospital. And so then, you know, those hospitals get 50% of that back, so they'd get $7 million back because that big system put the burden of their costs onto their small hospital. So, that's how causes are split up in the, in the state. Half are tax district, half are with their bigger system, and there's two in the entire state that are private. And that's us and Ridgecrest, which don't see either one of those benefits. So, just a little bit of a background and you'll see by, there's just some headlines here that have, that have been out recently in the last one to two years that just talk about 700 rural hospitals are, are close to closing. You know, just that the financial, it got, the finances after COVID got much harder for, for smaller hospitals. You'll see here a different, a different picture. California in that grade says that 50% of the rural hospitals are at risk for closure. And the primary reason for that is due to not getting equitable reimbursement from the big insurance companies. For example, we were struggling with torrents or Aethipa. We were only getting seven cents on the dollar. We've renegotiated, we're getting 20 cents on the dollar, which is about what we get from Medicaid. So it's, but we just don't have the bargaining power with, with insurers like that. And then the under reimbursement for Medicaid. So those are the, the key drivers when you read some of these articles that bring rural hospitals across the nation struggling with finances. Okay, measure B. In general, just to give you a sense, in 2002, LA County passed that property tax for all of LA County residents, and it was specifically for trauma centers, EMS and bioterrorism. And that's because LA County knew back in 2002, even with being in that huge metropolitan area, that they were not getting the reimbursements that they needed to keep their hospitals afloat. So they passed all that, that taxes, which now, 20 years later, generates about $350 million. And then they dispersed that to those hospitals. But that's, they knew that and we just haven't been able to participate in that either. As you know, a month or six weeks ago, we were awarded $3 million surplus from the measure B funds that, that were collected last year. Now, that $3 million really only gets us for, for about a year. So, during our cash flow analysis, that $3 million gets plugged into our cash flow and in June, July of 2026, we're, we're out of money again. So, that doesn't solve our problem. That, that in and of itself. What is happening with, one of the amendments that was added on to that measure B that came with that $3 million was, hey, DHS, which is LA County's Department of Health Services, you go and take a look at Catalina Island Health, do a report and get it back to us in 90 days. And just in case you don't know, I bumped into this and I was shocked. The full county budget, off the top of my head, is around $45 billion, but DHS is $10 billion. Well, the CFO of that $10 billion organization and the COO and the chief nursing officer and the chief financial strategies officer and a couple of the folks came to the island a couple of Mondays ago and stayed with us for six hours. We'd been feeding them lots of information along the way, but they stayed with us, they toured the facility, they asked lots of questions, we presented lots of information to them, and they are now putting their report together that they have to turn in to the Board of Supervisors. We gave them plenty of information on all of our finances, on all of our revenue, on all of our expenses. We had to give them our staffing plan, like how do we staff the hospital throughout the day and at nighttime? Well, how many RNs, how many LVNs, things like that. And then we gave them the maximum salary that we pay to each position, each, not each person, but each position in the hospital. So, they've got all that information and we're, we are really looking forward to that report because we feel that could be a good resource for you all, for a third party to come in that knows what they're doing, take a look at everything that we've got going on, the revenue we're trying to bring in, how efficiently we're running the business, and is there any other places that they're, that we missed to try and shore up our, our financial situation? So, that report, they hope to get it to, by the end of June, they hope to have that to the Board of Supervisors. They've got every piece of information they need from us and anyway, so they're, they're in good, good stead. One other thing that came up, I've heard about the audited financials and we just recently completed ours. I went back and searched John Lovrich's email and found at least four to five years worth of emails where he sent Matt Baker our audited financials. So, 2018, 2019. I don't think I saw 2020, but then 2021 and 2022, and then I sent him 24. And since I wasn't sure if John did it in 23, because that's about when he left, I sent him 23. So, Matt Baker had four or five years at least, and then I just sent him 23 and 24. So those, those have been sent to the Director of Finance for, for years now, pretty much once a year is, is how that happens. Okay. Yep, that's it. Just a couple of stats on what's happening, even though we're, it's a, it's a struggle and we're thin-staffed. 5,000 people come through the clinic for their primary care, their primary care. 2,400 people come through the emergency room, pretty much annual, that's pretty consistent year after year. And then the PT clinic, and that, we're not talking about people using the gym, we're talking about people going there and seeing a, a physical therapist, that's 10,000, that's 10,000 visits there, which is, I'll get to that later, but it's double anything that's happened, that was happening up at the old, at the hospital. Okay, other things that we're doing to try and shore up the, the situation, the IGT, you know that, I'm, I don't think there's anything to talk about that right now. We anticipate being back here in front of you in July to ask for your vote, to allow the city manager to, to sign, sign off. We, really good, good news with one of our contacts, at least at the moment, I'm going to tell it because I, I hope it comes true. We were getting about 80 cents on the dollar of our charges from Blue Shield and they've given us a verbal offer to do 95 cents on the dollar of our new rate sheet and, and so we're looking forward to that. So that's the first one, I think that's a big one. Gail has called around to all the largest employers to find out what insurance they are using so that we can make sure we get the best contracts we can with those insurers, or at least even have a contract. For example, we don't have a contract with Kaiser and I just saw some, some emails back and forth and we're trying to, we should have an appointment with Kaiser here shortly to add that to the insurances that we offer. A hospitalist, oh, fun, fun news there. Jason has never had eight patients in the, in the hospital part of the hospital at one time since he's been here. On April 1st, a hospitalist started with the, with the, with us, with the hospital. It's actually a position. It's a, he's board certified in trauma surgery, board certified in emergency surgery, and he is the interface now between our ER doctors and, and the nurses on the hospital wing. And so right now, at this moment, I think we admitted an eighth patient today, but for almost the entire month of May, we had eight patients in the hospital as opposed to two or three patients. And the split was usually an acute care patient that came out of the emergency room that was being observed, and instead of being flown off, it was now being observed here. And we're able to then convert that patient into what Medicare calls a swing patient or acute transitional care so that, at, at that point, as we're taking care of that person in, in a swing bed, the reimbursement on that is $10,000 a day. That's, that's one of those, anyway, it's a great thing. It really, it's really helpful for us. So there was a period of time where it was one acute patient, three swing bed patients, and three to four long-term care patients at the, at the end of the building. Our normal census is about one swing bed patient a year, which we count on inside of our budget, so that brings in $3 million a year. And, and it's just, it's an average, you know, it's different people, but it averages one person all year long. Well, if we keep this up, you know, two swing bed patients could really, every, you know, every, throughout the months, throughout the year, we don't know, it's only been one month, but that would really make a change for us, too. So, so anyway, that's very exciting that that, and it's, it's taken some stress off of our primary care doctors, they don't need to be on call because the hospitalist is on call to, to take care of any situations that come up with the people, patients that are in the hospital. Some cost-cutting things, we rebid our employee insurance, all of our property insurance, all of our commercial liability insurance, you know, and the swing there was maybe 200,000. We canceled a lot of contracts, we tried to really thin down the number of contracts we did and renegotiated others. And just in case you didn't know, during, while we were talking to some of the council members, and I know you're sending, I think you're meeting with Gail tomorrow, we realized that this information did not get conveyed to you, but there's been a pay freeze at the hospital wide for three years and, and admin took a 20% pay cut two years ago. So anyway, that's, those are some of the things that have, that have happened there. Along the partnership vein of things, there, there's still some in play. You know, UCI is, we're still hopeful. UCSD told us to get back to them in the summer and, and so that'll be happening and then there's two private companies that we're doing. And why do we want to be interested with those? If we partner with a UC, all of a sudden we fall into the same thing as the tax district hospitals and we would qualify for all the supplements. If we get, partner up with a, a larger system like a Providence, then we would get the home office allocation. I mean, it sounds bad, all those expenses put on our books, but then CMS, Medicare gives us reimbursement for those expenses. Man, I, we thought we had 15 minutes and I, I think I'm, okay, real quick, just to so you get a sense of this, really, basically Seneca Healthcare, there's a couple of nice things about this, is that is a hospital that's almost identical to our size. There, there's a thing called your, your primary service area and they have, they might have, I think, 6,000 or 7,000 people in their primary service area. You know, we're 4,000. They get 30,000 people that show up during the summertime and stay there permanently, whereas we see a million people showing up throughout the year. I mean, so it's kind of close. The interesting thing is our, our net patient revenue, that top left-hand column, we are really identical year after year as far as the net patient revenue that, that comes in for us. The middle column is the supplements they get. Anyway, we can all, we can go down to that big graph at the bottom where it says fiscal year '23. And you see, we did 14 million in net patient revenue, we get a little Medi-Cal supplement of 354,000. They, on the other hand, get a Medi-Cal supplement of $6 million. You go down to the bottom there and we still, in 2023, had a net income profit of, of 1.3 million, whereas if they did not get their Medi-Cal supplement, they would have lost $5 million. So that's the difference that happens with, with those, I'll say, tax district hospitals because that, that is, that happens over and over and over again for all those critical access hospitals that have that. So, that's just what we're, what we've been up against for them. The other interesting thing about them is they are also building a new hospital. And, and so with them being the same size, there's a lot of similarities to what's going on there. So we've, we've been able to have some good conversations with them about what they put together. For us, what, what, what goes into building a new hospital is you got to do volume determination. So right now, we can look at what the volumes we have right now, but what kind of outmigration has been happening because we don't have certain services in the hospital or because people have gotten into different habits about going mainland or we didn't take the insurance? So, studies were done, they used a thing called IBM Watson, which is AI many years ago, that, that analyzed and said, well, you're not going to get everybody back, but you're going to get some people back. And so they do that analysis and said, well, based on that volume that you will have at the new hospital, here's how many rooms and things like that that you need. So for example, just real quickly, you know, we're going from 12 beds. I talked about, anyway, so four acute that we have now are MedSurg and four swing, and we have four long-term care beds at the moment, that's what we're licensed for. We'd be going from 12 total to 14. At the moment, we only have one isolation room and the new hospital would have two isolation rooms where there's negative pressure in the room, so in case somebody's contagious, it doesn't come back out into the hospital, it, it goes, it, it leaves the building after being filtered. We'll have a few more clinic rooms, five currently now, we'd have six. But we'd also then get specialty exam rooms for visiting doctors. We'd have behavioral health rooms, wound care, stress test, echocardiograms, those kind of things would be added. Okay, I'm going to do a commercial break real quick because I talked about specialists and on our website, you'll know that the specialists are listed there and it even talks about the calendar dates that they're available. So, the specialists that we have currently registered with us, podiatry, orthopedic, cardiologist, urology, ophthalmologist, dermatology, and so you can schedule there. And instead of going to mainland, you can come here and visit any one of those kind of specialists. But those kind of specialists would also then be regularly occurring at the new hospital. Also in the building would be a couple of OR rooms for almost any kind of general outpatient surgery. The one we always talk about is colonoscopies because, you know, you got to drink that fluid and then you got to decide are you going to take the boat the next morning or are you going to stay overnight there and then drink the fluid and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And then the other thing that'll be in the new hospital is infusion, infusion therapy. So chemotherapy would be able to be done here and people would not leave, need to leave the island to go back and forth to do that. Okay, here's, I mean, we've got, and we can, when we come back some other time, we can cover this in more detail because this is breakdown room by room of what the old hospital. hospital does or doesn't have, and what the new hospital will have, so it, it goes on quite a bit there. The other, the other benefits, the other things, part of that is a helipad, is, is gonna, is expected to be on the roof of that building up in Quail Canyon, and as you know, that would expedite getting people on and off the island. Housing, we're planning on putting up 12 one-bedroom housing units at the facility to be in compliance with the city's statute, and to provide housing for our staff. Let's see, let's see, I think we've, you know, one of the things, actually, I didn't cover is currently we're at 15,000 square feet, and we got to go to 70,000, the, the new building is gonna be 70,000 square feet. And one thing that exacerbated that was the fact that we couldn't be on a, on a single story, we had to go to three stories. If we went down to a single story, we would only be at around 50,000 to 55,000 square feet. So there's a lot of overhead there to have extra corridors, elevators, and all that kind of stuff, so. I'm gonna bring that up because, and I, I forget at the moment, but Seneca is somewhere between 45,000 and, and 55,000 square feet, so we're pretty much in line, they're single story, but anyway, we're up to three stories. One, and the other reason that makes us have, need more square footage, is our rooms, when I say we have 12 beds currently, that's in six, wow, six rooms, because most of them are double occupancy, so, and it's just a curtain. So anything that's going on, everybody knows what's going on next door, and they're trying to watch two different TV shows, et cetera, et cetera. Every single room at the new hospital is, is a private room, private bathroom, so everybody has good privacy. Okay, oh, new expanded machinery, I'm gonna move along, okay. So, some people I was talking to, actually, it was Gail, was talking to Rose Ellen Gardner, and Rose Ellen said, ooh, word on the street is you guys aren't building a new hospital, you know, because nothing's happening. Now, I grant it, we haven't been here to give you guys an update, and I apologize for that, it's not gonna happen, because we'll be here in September again. But when it comes to wondering what's going on, this is just the hydrology report. And this hydrology report needs to be included in your CEQA report. There's 19 of these that need to get done. The other one, this one, air quality, greenhouse gas, energy impact, so this is, you know, three more studies inside here. So there's, like I said, there'll be 19 of these that all go into the CEQA report that we will end up submitting to the city with, with all of these. So there's been a lot of work going on, and, I mean, I could list, list them all off, but the, the other folks we've been coordinating with is the Coastal Commission. So we're up in a unique little corner up there, it's not part of Avalon's local coastal plan, whereas you normally would have jurisdiction over what we're doing up there, you, you don't in that situation. And so we're going through the Coastal Commission. We've had two meetings with the Coastal Commission. The first meeting, right off the get-go, they said, yeah, we see you're gonna be disturbing some sensitive plants, the coastal sage scrub, but for a hospital, we're gonna let you do it, you know, and, but limit, you know, try and really reduce the amount you're gonna disrupt. We had the housing in the back of the canyon, and they said, you will not hurt one leaf of coastal sage scrub for that housing, you need to find a different place for that. So we re, tried to rearrange all sorts of things to, to get that done. I'll, I'll get that to a minute. But the CEQA report, you saw that, we've, we've turned in two applications into the city planning, and they give us comments back, we, hopefully, our third submission could be our last one, as we've answered different questions, responses from all the different departments. We're dealing with HKI and OSHPOD, which are the, the, they have jurisdiction at the state level for licensing the hospital and making sure that the hospital gets built, built to standards. And then the Coastal Commission. So, but that's going good, we found a new location, they're okay with it. We are gonna have a significant amount of excavation for that new location, but they said that they could work around what they call a land form alteration, as long as we weren't hurting any plants. So we're not, we're not positive that there's not any sensitive plants, we did a quick look, but we haven't done the actual studies yet, because we have to coordinate with Island Company to get, to get onto that, that new piece of property there. Okay, so the site plan, I mean, there's lots and lots of engineering documents, there's, you don't, nothing really need to take away from it, Bob's got a lot of these at full size in his office. A couple of things that the city wanted, you're gonna lose a little bit of parking there with our sidewalk and the bus stop and things like that, because people, when they go to Joe Machado, could park, used to be able to park along the shoulder of the road, and so we were providing, and I think it was, you were losing eight spaces, we're providing 11 spaces on the property to make up for that. I forget what the other thing was that we fixed too, but a lot of things that have been, that have come up, we feel like we've, we've solved some of those, some of those things. That's the site plan, and, so, currently out of the Measure H funds, we've spent 2.3 million, and that's over the course of, geez, the first withdrawal we took was before I got here, let's just call it two years, just for simplicity. Now, so that's 2.3 million, and that's gone to things like the program manager that's overseeing all this, as the owner's representative, the construction planner, we have two archaeologists or architects, one that does the whole site plan, but then we have another guy that designs the interior of the hospitals and knows how all the dimensions have to be. So that's the other guy, we have civil engineers, we have geotech, we have a heliport consultant. We have a retired coastal commissioner consultant, well, retired coastal commissioner as a consultant for us to help us navigate the coastal commission process, but we have to pay those people. We have a land use attorney that is also helping us navigate entitlements, a fire prevention consultant who is a battalion chief up in, I think, Marin County. Landscape, we had to present a landscape plans, we had a landscape designer had to be brought on. We also have somebody helping us get through all the funding process with the USDA. And then we have an environmental team, those people that produce all those reports, cultural noise, traffic studies, biological studies, I mean, it's, like I said, it's 19 different studies, so all those folks are, are part of the team. That's where the funds have gone. And the way Measure H works, I'm sure you know, Matt Baker got it, has a, has a con, independent contractor that evaluates all of our invoices against a budget, and approves, and, and yep, this all makes sense, this is in accordance with the budget, sends it all to Matt, Matt makes sure there's, there's funds, he tells them it's okay to authorize a check, and then, then they send us a check. And then they ask for proof of payment for, for all of those. So it's a, it's a very closed, tight system with checks and balances. So, the new hospital, the new number is 224 million. And we've, we're talking to a guy who manages eight critical access hospitals on the West Coast, and has built two other critical access hospitals, and his only concern when he looks at what we're doing is how are you gonna make it until that new hospital is built? He knows that once that thing is built, we can afford it. And I can go into that, I'll, I'll do a quick. So on your taxes, when you have depreciation, it just kind of reduces your taxes a little bit, becomes like an, an expense. Well, for us, we put depreciation of a $225 million building down, and let's say it's $6 million, well then Medicare pays us $3 million in cash in, on behalf of that depreciation. For $225 million, and it's not all loans, but close, that's $2 million of interest a year, we get $1 million back in, in cash from Medicare because of the interest that we paid for the new building. So the building becomes, we are a much more financially stable organization just because of that building. It's, and there's slides on that, but we can, we can do that in more detail some other time. The way we're gonna finance it is $99 million with a very inexpensive USDA loan that goes for 30 years. Another USDA loan, instead of being at 3.5% or 4%, is gonna be closer to 7% to 8% for 76 million, and then we're gonna take the Measure H money, or not money, but the, the promise of the money, the tax, and do a tax-backed bond for $25 million, and then we'll have $24 million of philanthropy that'll add up to 224 million. We hope to break ground in quarter one or two of 2027, and another little slick piece of good news, just like the Conservancy was able to get the Marines to come out and do the airport, and it saved them 2, 2.5 million, and then a couple of years later, they had the Marines come out and do the roads out in the interior. We put an application in last September to see if, and it just, it goes to DOD, we don't know what, what branch of the service is gonna be interested in doing it, but we did get a call back from DOD that said, your, your application has been approved, and the military, and we've been told that there's two marine units, one in Oregon and one down in Southern California again, that are interested in doing the excavation, and the, you know, some of the flat work and maybe the retaining walls, so that'll, that's, that's not factored in to the 224 million, we don't, but that'll save us money from, from that bill. So June, you guys should get a copy of the DHS report. In July, we'll be talking to you guys about the IGT. In August, this is the first time I mention this, so in August, after we would need your vote on the IGT, DHS is presenting to the Board of Supervisors what their plan is for Measure B going forward, the big plan for the entire county. Is there, does there need to be a property tax increase, and, and what does that look like? And then if they increase it, and, and they expect to get maybe 400 million out of the property taxes this time, where does all that go? And are we one of those recipients? That's what we're gonna find out sometime in August. They gotta print the tax bill, so they got a deadline. We'll be here in September, and come to Catalinaville. And I'll stand here if you have any questions, but we'll definitely be back in July and again in September. Any questions?
That was really thorough. That was very thorough.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? No, and you presented that very well, and how many minutes did that take? He was right on time, huh?
No, it was worth it. Thanks, Tim.
Did a great job.
Took a lot of notes.
Boy, that's, yeah, thank you, thank you. Okay. Finance Director Matthew Baker.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to provide Council with an update tonight on kind of where we're at in the budget process. We don't have a complete budget to present, we're still moving along. A couple of key pieces to it this year is we're still just starting negotiations with the MOUs. Labor's a big piece of our operating budget, so, you know, I, I did my best guess as far as developing where I think we'll be, but that could all change depending on how the, the MOU negotiations go, so I just wanted to call that out. And then similarly, we have a, a large contract with PERC that's currently being negotiated, and again, I'm using estimates, kind of the best knowledge that I can for it, but there's likely gonna be some movement in the numbers between what I'm presenting tonight and what ultimately is presented at the next meeting for adoption. So this slide's been in every budget presentation, again, we want to operate a structurally balanced budget, and that means our recurring revenues exceed our recurring expenses, and that we use a conservative and transparent forecasting for those revenues. And then just highlighting again, estimates are continuing to be updated as we develop the budget. This is a comparison of the budget last year to this year in the general fund. Total general fund revenues last year were budgeted at 12.8, this year we're budgeting it at 13.5, so that's a 5.3% increase in revenues. Previous meetings, I, I presented and showed that I think we're gonna be significantly above where we'd budgeted, closer to 14 million in revenues. So where the budget is for next year is still below where I expect every account to fall this year. And again, why I do that is I don't want to be dependent on a record-breaking year, year over year, just to break even. But I, I do think this number, the 13.5, will be closer to where we actually fall than, than last year, even though it was favorable. This is a breakdown of the general funds budget by department and category of expense. So you can see the first row, law enforcement, nothing in salaries and benefits, or maintenance and operations, because we contract the services with the county. And you can see on the next two slides, a, what it means in terms of dollar increase, as well as what the, the budget estimate is in terms of percentage, so I'll leave it on percentage. Again, on the salaries and benefits, it's really kind of my best guess, but you can't use those percentages as a pure wage increase, because we do have changes in labor allocations that contribute to that as well. So for example, John Gilbert was previously in the planning department's budget, but as project manager, his, his day-to-day responsibilities were more aligned with public works as well as his reporting line, and so he's been moved to public works from a budget standpoint, from planning. So you can't just look at the numbers purely as, as far as wage changes, because there are some labor allocation changes as well. When I present the budget, I'll kind of highlight those, so you can see kind of how much of the, the increase is driven by wages versus how much of the change is really based on, on allocation changes. Some of the other kind of big changes from a percentage, public works, contract services, that's our tree trimming budget, right now we have 100,000 planned for next year compared to 75 in, in the current year budget. We also did some considerable increases in some of our maintenance and operating, maintenance budgets, kind of looking at all our facilities around town, and some of them need some additional attention next year. And so there is a considerable increase in community services, maintenance budget, right now 145,000. Again, these numbers might change, but that's kind of where we're looking at based on our initial discussions with department heads and the, the condition of the facilities. The next slide here is a breakdown of our general fund capital outlays. A lot of these projects we discussed at the last two city council meetings. The largest projects going on right now are the Five Corners Pedestrian Improvement Project. In prior year expenditures, including the current fiscal year, we expect to have spent about 2.2 million by the end of June on the project, with additional 3.3 million in spend next fiscal year. We were successful in getting a number of grants, or two grants for that project, and so the net cost right now is budgeted at about a half a million with, with those two grants, bringing it back close to 5 million. The next big project is the Pebley Beach Road improvements. To date, we've spent about 225,000, 2.25 million budgeted for next fiscal year. My understanding is, once we receive final approval on the $2 million grant, we will be putting that project out to bid, so that could be coming as soon as this summer. City workforce housing, I put an asterisk by it, so currently we've spent on the, the workforce housing project, and this is over the last two years, 273,000, developing the, the site plans for that housing project. The, the budget right now is listed at 2 million, but the, the actual construction costs of it are gonna be closer to 8 million, and so likely, in order to, if we, if we do pursue that project, we'll need to borrow a percentage of the project in order to pay for it. The, the positive is that we'll generate rent revenues, and so the intent would be that the rent revenues that are generated are enough to cover the, the maintenance of the building as well as whatever debt we incur to construct it. But likely there will need to be some city contribution if we do pursue the project beyond just the, the borrowing amount, so there would be some general fund contribution. And so right now, I have that in the budget at 2 million. Again, we'll be bringing this back before Council, likely later in the summer, to discuss in more detail. The others are kind of the, some of the smaller recurring projects, vehicle replacement and fire, most of that is the Edison donation, truck purchase, as well as some additional fire station upgrades and radio replacement. We all are also budgeting money for JMF field replacement, again, the goal's to set aside money each year for JMF. We think it has another five years, or three, four, maybe five years of life in the existing field, but we'll need a, a major refurbishment, and so we want to make sure we're setting money aside so we can fund that project.
Question, is there gonna be a JMF scoreboard replacement?
That commented on.
Yeah.
If we could, yeah, I mean, something quick, just a little quick update.
Jackie mentioned it as well. Jackie mentioned it as well.
The original idea was it would just replace the one that's up there, but the scoreboard that we have is a little bit larger than the other one. The other one was not, the, the poles that it sits on, engineering-wise, actually wasn't thick enough for the scoreboard that's up there right now. And they just made like these adjustments to, to make it that way. So the scoreboard that we have now is slightly larger. And so we actually have to dig new holes and put new poles down on there because the engineering has to be able to handle like 120 mile per hour winds. And based on the engineering. So we're now having to deal with that. And we're, and we have plans on it, and we have meetings on it. And hopefully, we'll get it done sometime this summer. So.
What's more is going to cost more.
So maybe Conley Pacific could donate the work like they did when they redid JMF long, long, long time ago. They were very active in the development of that field, correct? Before you even, I think.
Our own guys can do the work.
Oh, okay. I know they've got plenty of their things to do. Anyway, go ahead, Matt.
So then moving along to harbor fund revenues. Similar of the current year budget and next year's draft of the budget, operating harbor fund revenues, last year were budgeted at 7.8 million. This year, in the budget, I have 8.2 million. You can see the largest increase is coming from cruise ship warfage, and that's just based on the latest schedule. I will report in the, the budget how many cruise ships that, that number is based on and the, the average passenger count of those ships. In the bottom, we do have some harbor operating revenues that we dedicate to harbor capital, whether that's capital maintenance or capital improvements. The cross-channel warfage, you can see is budgeted increase by 450,000. That's anticipating the rate increase going into effect that council approved going into effect in September. And then cruise ship warfage, which council approved, $2.50 increase that goes into effect on January 1st. That's that 825,000. And so those two increases in, in next fiscal year, not for an entire fiscal year, are going to generate 1.3 million in additional funds to, to fund harbor capital. So similar to the general fund, a lot of these numbers were still kind of in flux, given the, where we're at with the union negotiations. But in general, this is a breakdown of the harbor by department. Administration is the harbor master, as well as the, the senior admin assistant for salaries and benefits. Maintenance, the harbor purchases additional insurance, that covers the majority of that maintenance budget. Contract services is legal as well as, I'm trying to think what other falls in there. Just kind of moving on in the contract services for public works, that is where the lifeguard contract comes out of, as well as the trash collection and restroom maintenance contracts. The contract services and operations relates to the, the shoreboat service primarily. So the next two slides will show kind of where the, the increase in spend is. You can also see increased maintenance spend in the harbor accounts. A lot of that is actually being driven by utilities. So I think Edison presented at a recent meeting, the 60% rate increases. And so the city and, and a couple of accounts has quite significant utility bills. Sewer in particular, but, but the harbor as well. And so we are factoring that rate increase in our budget amount for utilities. And this slide here just shows it as a percentage basis. So in the harbor fund, the capital outlays, Caprio Mole is, is the, the largest project in the budget for next year in the harbor. Stage zero, which we presented on a, a couple meetings ago, is the, kind of the pre-construction activities. And so that's setting up the temporary facilities, purchasing some of the long lead items, as well as some of the, the infill that, that wasn't completed as part of phase one. We're looking to complete it before the start of phase two. And so that stage zero is budgeted at 2 million, but we did receive 2 million in a federal earmark that we've already received that can be used for that. And so that stage zero cost would, would be covered by those funds we've received. Other major projects for next year in the harbor would be Green Pier repairs. There's considerable electrical repairs that need to be done. We, we may, when we get closer to this project, be bringing forward decking repairs as well. It just really depends on cost and whether it makes sense to pair those two projects together, or if they can be done separately and phased over a couple of years. But the, the decking on the Green Pier is another area that's going to be coming in future budgets. The Club Dock Pier Replacement Project, that one we expect to be done in the fall of this year. That one's largely We also are planning on doing some construction work on the elbow. And so we have 300,000 budgeted for next year to take a lot of the, the temporary improvements that were currently out there in the elbow and make them more permanent. So extending the sidewalk and, and improving some of the traffic flow with the placement of crosswalks and that sort of thing. So the, kind of the total project capital outlays in the harbor next year is 4.3 million, 2.3 of that coming back in grants for a net spend of about 2 million in the harbor.
A quick question for the beach projects. Do we plan on going after any state grants for that?
For, for which one?
For the South Beach as well as Step Beach. Is there any state grants that we can look into?
We, we are, I believe, looking into grants for the, the South Beach project.
We have an, I'm sorry, Matt. We have an application in, on the South Beach project right now. We haven't heard back.
So, so the idea for the amounts for South Beach and Step Beach is really to keep the, the permitting alive and as well as some additional engineering, so that when we find out about the grants, we're in a position where we can move quickly. This is a breakdown of the Internal Service Funds. So this is general administration, which includes the city manager's office, finance, city attorney, as well as the elected officials.
How do you maintain us for $24,000?
That's, that's mostly your training budget. So training and travel. So the, so the, the amount we budget is 4,000 per elected official.
Yeah, okay.
So that training and travel, we, for all the different departments, we group with maintenance and operations. You can make an argument, it could be in salaries and benefits, And again, I don't want to put too much emphasis because we are still developing this budget. But you can see kind of preliminary where we, we expect to be. I, I printed a copy of this to council. If there are any specific sections where you'd want to see the detail, I can, I can share that with you after the meeting. But we are still developing it. So I didn't want to provide the line-by-line detail because some of those may be changing. And then lastly, the other enterprise funds. So this is sewer, saltwater, solid waste, and Avalon Transit. At the next meeting, we'll be bringing forward the proposed rate increases for sewer, saltwater, and solid waste. Sewer and saltwater are proposed to increase by 3% and 2.5% respectively, as outlined in the cost of service study, with solid waste increasing by 7%. And that's all based on the five-year study. I only bring that up because next year is the last year of that five-year study. And so we will be going out to RFP likely early in the summer to give as much time as we can to the project to develop another five-year plan for sewer, saltwater, and solid waste. And then you can see contract services is really where the majority of the spend in sewer, saltwater, and particularly in solid waste. For sewer and saltwater, that's with PERC, and we're in current negotiations with their contract. So I do have an estimate in there kind of built in. But we're hoping to get better clarity before we adopt the budget on those. So for all of them, you can see we are bringing in enough money to cover the operating expenses, but the capital outlays we have planned for next year do draw on fund balance in those And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions or comments?
That was pretty good.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, Julie Barita.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Those were two hard acts to follow. Mine will be short and sweet, but maybe a little exciting. So just real quick, this evening, I want to talk about some recycling stats, some updates year-over-year, talk again about what goes where, as we have to continue to try to change behavior on what to put in what container. Talk about the Olens Cube and some future outreach opportunities. And also with that, I'm going to look for some direction from you of where I can also be more present to touch the public and do some more outreach. So this picture here, you could see is with council member with Lisa and Yessenia were able to join us last year at our material recovery facility, also aka MRF. And we will be open to the council members that didn't attend, or if Yessenia or Lisa want to come again, we're more than happy to have you, but would love to have the rest of you come out and take a tour to see what happens when your recycling comes over to the mainland and how we process it. With that being said, I did an analysis from April of 2023 through March of 2024, and we diverted, or we recycled 700 tons of recycling. That's from the residents and from the businesses. That same period, March to, or April to March for 2024, 25, we recycled 1,376 tons, so almost a 50% increase, which is quite amazing, or 676 tons. So it really does matter. And with what will be coming to you in future meetings on trying to extend the life of the landfill, everything that we keep out of that landfill helps extend the life. So it's really important and it really, it really does help and also helps the environment. So with that being said, I did a postcard not too long ago and really just continuing trying to make sure, and I, I always look for any direction, if there's anything you see here that's not clear, or you know, we, we take your recommendations. I think with Avalon Environmental, CRNR, we don't do cookie cutter, so I can design anything to meet the needs of the island. So I really ask for you, if, if you hear something that seems confusing, we want to focus on maybe not just doing so broad of an outreach between city staff and my social media girl. We try to do different things, myth versus fact, to try to do some outreach and education on what goes in what cart on a specific item, really is what might be the next steps in our outreach and education. But I think being new over, I think we're going on three years, still trying to, you know, do a more general thing, showing all the carts, English and Spanish on what goes in each container. We'll continue to do that. So with that being said, as Jocelyn mentioned, the Olens Cube arrived. Residents are now able to recycle their bottles and cans and get CRV cash rebates. And so before you do that, you download the Olens Cube app on your iPhone or Android, whatever phone you have, to set up the account first because you're paid back through PayPal is how that works. You get a PayPal account, and that's how you get paid back. The machine accepts plastic bottles, glass bottles, and aluminum cans. But only make sure you deposit, I did a picture here on the screen, only make sure you, you deposit things that have the writing that says CRV 5 cents. So with that said, that's where that comes into my little show-and-tell bag here. So I've been doing this for three decades. And what you find is sometimes when folks say you have a new buyback center that opens up on the mainland, that's a buyback center where you can drive up and take your recycling, or now that we have the Olens Cube, I don't want it to deter, deter people from saying, oh, well, I'm going to recycle my bottles and cans now, so I don't need to use my, my recycle cart at home. And that's absolutely not the case. So I brought, brought some things, my pickup was last week, but I brought some things to show that people don't think about. Aerosol cans, so from the bathroom. Once it's completely empty, it could be bug spray, hairspray, whatever product you use, mousse. A lot of things we see don't get recycled that come from the bathroom. People put those, because you just have that trash. And what I do is I just set it to the side and then I, you know, take it out and put it in. We all have medicine bottles. This is a plastic bottle that's recyclable, but not CRV. Also from the restroom, this is cardboard, toilet paper rolls. Vitamins, gummies, all these containers. So every vitamin container we have, all recyclable, even when we want to treat ourselves to
Okay.
Something good. So anything, you know, this has got cardboard, plastic, lids don't have to come off, as-is, goes in. The other thing people just don't think about, so I brought some samples, you know, again, it's not like a brown Amazon box, but all this stuff is cardboard, it's paper. So all this stuff should also go in there. And then last but not least, we all get way too much of this. All the stuff that comes into the mail that we read or don't read, junk mail, kids' school papers. I didn't mention, but I'll say it now, we were able to finally get the school district signed up and programs implemented in Q4. So that could be part of the reason we've seen some increase in the tonnage, which is great. But again, I just want folks to remember, there's so much. And again, no bags if possible. We have a, what we call a bag breaker at our facility that, that will pull the bags out. But I use my Amazon boxes, and I just take it loose and then I dump it into my cart. Or you can use your Vons bags, you could use, I get big bags if you have, you know, any, any type of stuff you get. For you guys, not as much, but on the mainland, if we're going to restaurants and you're ordering food takeout, they give you these huge bags to take your stuff home. I just reuse those, so repurpose. So anyway, so hope you or the folks at home, anyone watching, learned something with my, my samples. And so as I mentioned, I'm always looking for opportunities of how I can touch the residents. So we will participate again in the Fourth of July event by having a booth and being there present to talk to folks about recycling. The postcards, I have a sample of what's been going out, and we're going to continue to do that over and over. But again, any guidance you can provide. So I'm going to do another postcard in July that will talk about the Olens Cube, the what goes where, reminders on bulky item pickup. And it's been so successful, we decided we're going to do two of the HHW and bulky item pickup events per year. So one in the spring, one in the fall. So Jocelyn and I just need to pick a date, but the plan is to do in October, same as last year. And when I do the mailing in September, we'll make sure we advertise that bulky item and HHW event. And then again, any other recycling information we can include. So with that, that concludes my presentation. But happy to answer any questions or any feedback you might have now, or obviously you can send to Jocelyn or I later, and, and we'll definitely look into it.
I have a small question. For the cans in the machine, does it matter if they're crushed or not?
It does. Very good question. And so I think what we'll do is, and we're going to do some social media posts, but even when I do my postcard in July, we can touch on that. So they've made it very clear, and I have a bottle over there, but the, the machine has to read it. So they have to see it. So it, it won't accept anything crushed. So a lot of times, folks, and we've all done it at home, right? Like you'll twist your plastic bottles so you can compact more. Everything has to be left as-is. So you can't twist a bottle, you can't crush the cans. When I grew up, we had a, a can crusher outside the back door, right? That you pulled it because, and we did that. This can't be that way. So everything, so that's a very good question. And the other thing I want to make sure that I touch on, and this is just new legislation that started this year, January 1, 2025, there was never any CRV, CRV on wine bottles. There now is. So you can recycle your wine bottles in this machine. We take them anyway at, in your, in your residential carts, but if you wanted, there is now CRV on a wine bottle. I'm sure other bottles, but wine was how they advertised it, and everyone resonates with that. So, yes.
Did you have a couple of questions?
Just a question. Well, one, thank you so much for getting this all going, and to Jocelyn as well for getting it going. I did have a question on part budget for Matt and part kind of what we're looking at. The, there's been a number of days where we've gone out to do either a dump run for our house when we were doing spring cleaning, or to do household hazardous waste. And unfortunately, the office is closed early, or household hazardous waste isn't there, and they're only there for that one day. I'm wondering if we need to discuss either extending the amount of hours or looking at what the budget would be to increase that, to make sure that it is open when it's published to be open. And we used to have two days for household hazardous waste. I don't know if it's possible to bring that back again.
So we could look at both of those. And then the other thing is, I don't know, gosh, I've attended every one that we've had. So we've done, I guess it's been, well, it's been three, no, two bulky items so far.
Yeah.
I also feel that, or we add, maybe add more here and have it, have it happen here at City Hall, because the amount of people that come through on their golf carts, riding their bikes, we had last time, I don't know what it was, but it reminded me of a creeper. You know the car creepers you lay under to get under the car? Someone actually used a creeper. Someone actually used a creeper and put a huge fish tank, and three people rolled it on their creeper up the street and came in here. And so I think, to make sure we're touching everyone, completely agree, but I'm wondering if it's not even better to have one more a year here, because I don't know that everyone has the means to go to the other side of the island. Yeah, I don't know what their transportation, you know, is, that they can get it over there.
Well, and I think people used to appreciate the, the split town pickup that previously used to happen, so they used to have two a year, and it was household hazardous waste, so that one half of the town was one day, and the other half was like a day or two later. And that seemed to both be great for people who like to yard, like free yard sale, basically rummage sales, but go out and see what stuff was left by other people, because one man's trash. But that seemed to also be helpful, because they didn't have to then transport it somewhere. So I don't know if that's something to also revisit possibly.
I'll definitely, I mean, that was before, I think, both Jocelyn and I's time, but I'll definitely look into it and see if I can get some history on that.
Happy to give info if you guys need, I mean, I know some city staff was here when those used to happen, so.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah. Thank you.
So I have a question about paper plates and stuff like that. So you know, the coated paper plates are not recyclable, right? So, so if you have a compostable or recyclable plate, but it's got food on it?
That goes for that's organic.
That can go in the compost thing?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Considered food soil paper.
Just wanted to get that out there, because I tell people that all the time, they're like, no, you can't do that. And then this country has gotten incredibly yucky packaging. I hate packaging, but it's got that heavy duty plastic, and I always look for a recycle sign, and I, a lot of them, I don't see any kind of a recycle sign. Is that really super thick plastic? Is that recyclable?
No, it's trash.
That's what I thought.
And even if you see the recycle symbol on it, it's made from recyclable plastic, but it's not recyclable.
Right.
Yeah. So all, all that prepackaging that you see, even, you know, pita chip bags, potato chip bags, bread bags, you know, the, the sleeve the bread comes in, it's made from recycled paper, but it's not a recyclable item.
Right. And then coated paper as well, like slick brochures and all that kind of stuff?
We take all that. No, there's, that's a myth, and I'm glad that you said that, because I think I'll add it, because I was just doing a presentation to a sanitary district last week, and, excuse me, and the pizza box thing came up. So I thought, okay, let's do that. So we did that myth this week. There was a time where, when recycling started years ago, where you actually had to remove the clear plastic liner out before you could recycle an envelope. So the answer is no. These really slick things, glossy magazines, books, you know, I do Sudoku puzzles, all that, that all goes in the recycling cart. Yep, that's, that, that changed many years ago, but now that you asked me that question, stay tuned, I'll do a post on that.
Good to know. Recycle, everybody, come on.
So I'm curious, you talk about how much we're taking out of the landfill, but how much goes into the landfill every year?
Oh, gosh, I didn't bring those tons. Do you know, I don't know by heart, do you know, Jocelyn?
I just, you don't, I'm just curious, if you don't know right now, that's okay.
I don't know.
Let me just.
How about if we come back and provide an update? Next time I'll do, I'll show both. I'll show what's going in. I was just so excited to see that we almost doubled.
No, the savings is incredible.
Yeah, no, but for sure.
Okay, so clothes?
Clothes, do not get recycled, we say donate. So I know the Rotary did a huge event that they did last year. We can, we talked about that for me participating, but I know the Rotary did it. We could partner with the Rotary and maybe help barge it off, and maybe I could help since we send barges on a regular basis. Maybe it's collected by the Rotary or any other service organization, and we could help put it on our barge going back, something like that, to partner. But all that stuff, we, we do have some programs on the mainland, we collect it, we schedule like a bulky item pickup, then we have a huge storage container where we collect all of the textiles, and then we donate, donate them to Goodwill.
I mean, but there's stuff that's just garbage.
There is stuff that's just garbage, yes.
And that just ends up in the landfill?
And that would just be bulky items. We go through it, we break it apart, we'll try to recycle as much of it as possible, furniture, stuff like that.
Right.
But, but nothing with clothing. Clothing either gets donated or it goes to the landfill.
Okay, and then the larger bottles, now that don't fit into the cube, and they're worth 10 cents?
Yeah.
How do, how does anybody limit, all that stuff is in the big bottles, how?
So those you can take into Vons. So the state requires, the state requires all grocery stores to participate and give CRV materials. So you can take that into Vons, and they will give you that money back.
They know that? They know that I can get my 10 cents from them?
Yes.
Yes, they do. And that was, that was new just January 1st this year, that they used to be able to get a pass, that they could pay a certain amount of money every single year, but all grocery stores throughout the state of California have to give that money back. And I would say if you hear that from a resident, I would bring it to Dave's attention, so they can reach out to Vons.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty.
But I have just one thing to say. I was given a message, Rotary is working on dates for another.
I would be happy to come speak at a Rotary meeting.
So I just want to let you know, they're planning it.
I'm a former Rotarian, so I am very well aware, yes.
Julie, that was great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, no problem.
Lots of good news today.
Yeah.
Okay, consent calendar.
Nope.
Oh, God, no, oh yeah, I'm sorry. Presentation.
In proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon, recognizing the month of June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, whereas Pride Month serves to recognize the historical, local, national, and global contributions of the LGBTQIA+ community, and whereas we express our solidarity with the LGBTQIA+ community of Avalon as they celebrate their identities and love, not only during the Pride Celebration on June 7th, 2025, but throughout the entire year. And whereas every individual, regardless of sexuality, gender identity, age, ability, race, religion, marital status, national origin, or physical challenges, possesses the fundamental right to feel safe within their community, to be free from discrimination, and to live without the threat of harassment, and whereas the diverse LGBTQIA+ community significantly enriches the academic, economic, artistic, and social spheres within and beyond our community, and whereas this nation was founded on the core principle that every individual has intrinsic dignity and worth. The City of Avalon invites all residents to uphold this principle and to take an active stance against prejudice in all its forms. And whereas the celebration of Pride Month enhances awareness, offers support, and advocates for the LGBTQIA+ community in Avalon, it presents an opportunity for meaningful engagement, fostering alliances, promoting acceptance, and advancing equal rights. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Avalon hereby proclaims the month of June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. We encourage all residents to acknowledge the contributions made by members of the LGBTQIA+ community, and to actively uphold the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. Date it this third day of June 2025.
Very nice, thank you. Consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. And real quick, before we get started, I just want to report, I got a few photographs from my wife. There's a group of five boys running around collecting cans and putting them in the machine. So it's, it's working.
That's great.
Hopefully they have a phone and they're collecting, but they're, they look very happy doing it, so.
And they figured out how to put it on their phones.
They figured it out, yeah.
We had to have a special class. Learned nothing from the library? Not on that one.
Okay, consent calendar, item one, approval of the minutes from May 20th, 2025, regular City Council meeting. Item two, warrants, approval of total expenditures for May 12th, 2025 through May 23rd, 2025, totaling $1,902,791.90. Item three, introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance designating fire hazard severity zones for the City of Avalon pursuant to Government Code Section 51179. And item four, adopt a resolution adopting a project for fiscal year 25, '26 funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Council, with your pleasure.
I want to approve items 1, 3, 4 on consent.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
Why aren't we using the machines?
We've had technical difficulties.
Oh, okay, I see the planning of the construction, okay, perfect. Okay, item number six.
Public hearing for fiscal year 2025, 2026 miscellaneous fee schedule. At this time, we'll ask Council to hear a presentation by Matt Baker, open the public hearing for public comment, close the public hearing, and I'd like to amend the recommended action to include item four. If consensus, adopt the resolution, which would adopt the proposed fee schedule. Matt?
So I don't have a full presentation prepared, but I just want to kind of go over the highlights of the changes. For the majority of the fees, specifically fees related to planning, harbor, and staff labor, and we increased them by CPI rounding to the nearest dollar, so that's 3.1%, and that's using April to April comparison for LA County. We did not increase the fees for recreation vehicles or transit. They're at nice round even numbers, so we'll keep track of them, and maybe they'll go up in another year. But just kind of discussing with my team and given the relative dollar amounts at stake, raising the, the park rental from 30 to 31 just didn't really seem to make sense. But I do want to highlight that we didn't increase it this year, so if and when it does go up by $5, know that it hasn't been raised for a couple of years. But that, that's really it, unless there's specific questions. Again, most of them just went up by 3.1%, but no increase in recreation vehicles or transit.
Any questions? I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any comments? Close the public hearing. Council? There's a consensus.
How do we say that? I moved to adopt it as it is.
As presented, okay?
As presented, there we go.
I would ask that it, adopt the resolution attached establishing the fee schedule. We do have a resolution attached, so.
Okay, as he stated.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
Item number six.
Next item for under public hearing, vacancies, recruitment, retention policy and report summary. At this time, I would give a, just a brief report that what this is, is it reflects compliance with California Assembly Bill AB 2561, which was approved last fall. This law, new law, requires public agencies to present the status of job position vacancies and recruitment efforts at a public hearing prior to the agency's adoption of, or at least once a fiscal year, prior to the adoption of the budget for that fiscal year. So what we have as attached are all of the, for 2024 through this fiscal year, the city's efforts in replace or vacancies that we had, how they were filled, whether they were internal or promotional or open recruitment, and currently we don't have any full-time positions that are open or vacant, I should say. And we also are not within the 20% vacancy provision of the law, so we don't have that issue either. So the only positions that we currently have vacant that we're looking to fill are some of our seasonal and part-time positions. It doesn't mean that we might not add in the future in this fiscal year a full-time position, but that would be an additional, and we don't have any vacancies. So at this time, we would ask Council to open the public hearing, receive and file the report, take comments, but receive and file the report, and receive any comments from the public if there are any, prior to closing the public hearing.
Open the public hearing? You've received the report? Any comments from the public? Close the public hearing.
Thank you. Next item under general business. Agenda item seven is the repair and maintenance of the city end float. As you'll see in the staff report, the city sent out the city end float for repairs with Al Larson Boat Shop as we normally do. The anticipated scope was going to be $25,000 or less. We came in at $25,631, so we are before you. So at this time, we would, you know, ask Council to amend the fiscal year 24, '25 budget to allocate for the additional $26,000 in funds, and ratify prior actions, and authorize the expenditure of the $25,631.05 to Al Larson Boat Shop as set forth in the, in the staff report.
Council? Pretty much said that, but.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend that. Fiscal year 2025, 20, 2024, 25 budget to allocate an additional $26,000 in funds to the Harbor's Float Maintenance Fund, account number 10470-5705. To ratify prior action and authorize an expenditure of $25,631.05 to Al Larson Boat Shop, a sole source vendor for the rehabilitation of the city-owned end float from account number 10470-5705.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lavelle?
Aye.
And Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Item number eight.
Thank you. Item number eight is the procurement of a high-density storage system. We have been struggling with finding space, finding storage space to maintain our documents. Both Gabby and Devin have been working very hard to go through and purge our documents pursuant to our, our policy. And where we're at, doing some research, is we would like to purchase and have install this high-density sliding system that would go into the office area connected to, adjacent to, community services back there where we have standing file cabinets right now that just aren't very efficient. This system would take it nearly to the ceiling. We could install 288 of our banker's boxes within the system, and so we're seeking Council approval to go ahead and procure that, get that ordered, and hopefully have that installed this summer.
Excellent.
You mean the banker's boxes that are out there would go away?
Some of them, yes. We can get rid of them, yeah.
And you have to keep all of those? You can't do them electronically?
We're going through, we're going through that process. Much of, much of it, we are scanning in and using laser fish, but there are a number of documents that we have to maintain.
Go through the same thing at work.
Yeah, it's rough.
Okay, who's going to make the affirmative?
I'll make the motion, make the affirmative. Finding that the city has used a cooperative purchase procedure as outlined in Avalon Municipal Code Section 3-4 dot 111, and dispense with bidding or other competitive procurement procedures to authorize an expenditure not to exceed $30,000 for the procurement of a high-density storage system from High Density Inc.
I'll second. Call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes. And before we proceed, can I just ask Scott Campbell a question? On number six, do we need to take a vote for the receive and filing of the report?
Oh, we should take, uh, we can do that, yeah. We can go back and just, I mean, it just says we're supposed to give a report, but it's appropriate to receive and file that if you want to go back on that vacancy report.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll move to receive and file the report for item six.
I'll second.
Second, call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.[1728.02] Thank you, Scott.
Item number nine.
Agenda item number nine, Crescent Hillside Stabilization Contract Increase. Mr. Greenlaw, you've been sitting there so patiently.
I know.
Good evening, council. This item deals with what we consider the closeout of the Crescent Hillside project. You previously authorized $600,000 to fund that construction contract with Arizona Drilling and Blasting. There was some additional costs right at the end to put, we tracked down where the drainage was coming out of the hillside, had to excavate considerably in there, put in that subsurface drainage, and then recompact the hillside. So we need another $278,370.70 to close out this contract. That brings the total for that contract to $878,370.
And no reimbursement by property owner on the hillside?
That's a separate issue.
Oh, okay, all right. Any questions? If not?
I'm just excited that it's going to be a closed-out project finally. That'll be nice to have it completed. So with that, I'll make a motion to amend the fiscal year 2024, 25 CIP budget by increasing account 10550-64, 6547, CIP project number 205002 by $329,455.63 for a total project sum of 1.304455.63, and then authorize the city manager or his designated to amend the contract with Arizona Drilling and Blasting for an additional $278,370.70 for a total sum of $878,370.70.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lovell?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
Night, Tony.